Recording in progress.
What's up? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome the town panel select board meeting. November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five at six oh two P M. Uh, sorry for the delay, but our one laptop is updating itself, so in a switch. Please to call the meeting order, board member roll call. I'll scroll my.
Chaney Alexander.
Mike Gardner.
Jamie Percy.
Brian Harris.
Rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Move the agenda. We had some additions.
He is true, I think.
Was there one or two?
It's the coat, right?
Okay.
So we had a discussion about a coat guy.
It has minutes from the special meeting that we did.
Yeah, that's right. It's after was two other.
There was minutes second.
You remember the date on the handle without having to look for it? October twenty-seventh? Well, that was the Monday, right?
Yes.
Okay. Because I screwed up on the twenty-third.
Hmm.
Yep.
Yeah. So we have to add minutes. For an October twenty-seventh special meeting.
Yep.
And we have, we want to add discussion about a coat drive. Where do we want to add the coat drive?
Your public comment or?
We could do it like. Maybe right before the year-end select board meeting schedule?
Thirteen A?
Yeah.
Perfect. And the minutes will just be added after the minutes of October twenty-third. Public hearing. Enter the agenda with the additions.
Double second.
We motion now second all of the favor. I'm gonna put it up for public comment. Excuse me. Mm-hmm. What's that?
One's up online.
I mean, public comment in the. Room? Okay. Prove minutes, October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five select board meeting. So moved.
Second.
The most narrow second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes of October twenty-third, select board public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
The most narrow second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Date.
Minutes of October twenty-seven. There's a special meeting. Have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
The most narrow second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Did we have? Seems like we had some minutes that we couldn't approve because we didn't have a quorum.
That's right.
I went back.
I thought we brought them back.
Yeah, we did.
Eating on the twenty-third.
But I still thought we couldn't approve because we still didn't have a quorum.
Oh.
Oh.
I wasn't at that meeting.
To see what was tabled.
Okay, because I'm pretty sure there is a meeting. There were two meetings in a row that we didn't have a quorum of members that were present, and I believe it was September.
It was a September meeting.
February eleventh.
February eleventh, I was thinking it was nine.
Yeah.
Is that what you know? Okay, I think that's out there still, and I just want to make sure. We, did we take care of that? Oh, warrants, sorry, just.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, accounts payable, October thirty-first, thirty-two thousand four hundred forty-one dollars and forty-eight cents.
So move.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
The accounts payable, November seventh, thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Accounts payable, November fourteenth. Four million eight hundred and eighty-three thousand eighteen dollars and forty-one cents.
So move.
Second. Any questions? Um, just so everyone's aware, those are, we say it every year. It's our ballot articles and they can get into the. School tags, mostly, didn't pay off. Have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Um, payroll, October thirty-first, eleven thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty-eight cents.
So move.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Payroll, November seventh, thirteen thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-five cents.
So move.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Payroll, November fourteenth, sixteen thousand eight hundred and nine dollars and eighty-five cents.
So move.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, we have Dara Zink of B C R C with a hazard mitigation plan presentation.
I don't know how do you normally do it here. I'm gonna stay here.
Hold on, we're coming.
We can do this, however.
Hold on.
Here's that's for you. Okay.
Hannah's gonna pull up. I just have a brief presentation to go over. Um, while Hannah's pulling that up, actually, I do have to do the plug for the regional select board meetup that's happening. Um, take one, I guess we pass it on. Um, if you would like to do that, meet up with other select boards in the area. Uh, we just ask that you register in advance so that you, we can be prepared for you.
Well, while you're talking about it, while you brought that up. There we. We can meet there as a group.
Mm-hmm.
Because we're not discussing town business, so we would not be violating, you know. Okay, I just want to make sure that everyone gets it. We could all go there at ease. However. Actually, I'll be. Sorry.
You're okay. That, that was great information. Um, and we're just about ready to rock and roll. So do you want me to beep at you, Hannah, like the old kids books when you turn the page or just let me say next? Um, okay. So, um, are you able to share the actual slide? Maybe. Oh, where to go? There, well, there's part of him. Oh, he's coming. Um, okay, so I'm Dara Zink. I'm from Benetton County Regional Commission. Um, I'm the Emergency Management Program Manager. Uh, so I work on towns with their local emergency management plans usually. Um, I act as the local liaison between your E M D Craig and the state, uh, during an emergency. Um. And I also work on the hazard mitigation plans for towns. So I'm just here, uh, to talk to you guys about hazard mitigation planning, what that looks like. Um, and why we do it. So avoiding mayhem through hazard mitigation planning. Um, I don't know if you guys are familiar with him, but he's one of my favorites. Uh, go ahead. Um, so mitigation falls right in the center of FEMA's emergency management cycle. Uh, mitigation can take place at any point during the response, recovery, and preparedness stages. It focuses largely on building or rebuilding in ways that reduce risk permanently. And hazard mitigation planning is risk-informed decision-making that takes place generally during the preparedness phase. Um, but we can also mitigate as soon as we respond and during the recovery phase as well. Uh, go ahead, Hannah. Thank you. Hazard mitigation plans allow the towns to reflect on the hazards that have the greatest impact on the town and create an action plan to help the town prepare for and lessen the impacts of those hazard events even before they happen. These plans can help to protect life and safety of residents, build resilience, and ultimately save money. Um, I'm not going to read every one of those to you because you'll be sleeping by the time they don't. So go ahead, Hannah. Um, most importantly, mitigation, well, not most importantly, right? Life and safety is most important. Um, but in importantly, uh, mitigation can save up to thirteen dollars for each dollar invested, and federal grant funding alone is six to one. Um, so go ahead, Hannah. All right, so who's familiar with the Emergency Relief and Assistance Fund? I got, I've got some, I've got lots of head nodding. Great, because I've been to a lot of towns and they're like, I have no idea what you're talking about. So I'm really glad. Um, so I'll just do a brief overview. Just a reminder, at a base level, uh, federal reimbursement through FEMA comes in after disaster and for eligible damages will reimburse seventy-five percent typically. And I should preface this to say, under current standards. Right? Things are changing, things are a little squishy. So this is under current guidelines and standards. Um, the state then, through this Emergency Relief and Assistance Fund, which I'll refer to as E R A F. The state comes in at a base level and covers seven point five percent. And then the town is responsible for that remaining seventeen point five, right? Okay, so go ahead. The town can increase that state's reimbursement. So if you check off these four things, the national, uh, joining the National Flood Insurance Program, adopting town road and bridge standards. Doing your annual local emergency management plan and adopting a local hazard mitigation plan, you're then eligible for an additional, um, up to receive, excuse me. Twelve point five percent reimbursement as opposed to that base seven point five. And then we continue. Um, if you take one more step and you protect your river corridors, you're then eligible for a seventeen point five percent reimbursement, and that's the max in this case. Um, any questions about E R A F? Okay. So let's talk about, uh, where panel currently stands. So this report is available online at Flood Ready Vermont. If you want. Hannah can share, or she has shared the PowerPoint with you, potential, Tara. Okay. Um, so you have access to this. If you click the community reports down on the bottom, it'll take you where you can find all of this information. Um, so right now panel is at that base seven point five percent. Uh, if you did. If you updated your hazard mitigation plan, that would get you to the twelve point five. And then if you were to do the additional river corridors, that would get you to the max seventeen point five. Um, so if you just click next.
What question?
Yes, pop in anytime.
Okay, uh, the river corridors, for example.
Right.
More specifically. What does that look like? And are there variations?
There are variations. There are variations and, um, bylaws can get complicated, and so I'm not going to dive into them tonight. Um, I'm actually working through that process with another town and kind of learning as we go. And E R A F and the river corridors, I just want to, um, be specific. They are encouraged by the state. This is the carrot, this E R A F rate, the seventeen point five, but it's not a requirement for your N F I P participation. So just, there's a couple of things happening right now within the state where we have to update towns' bylaws just to meet. More stringent N F I P standards. That's happening right now as our flood maps are occurring. And then if towns want to do the river corridor to meet that E R A F rate right now, right, that's a possibility. But then we're looking forward down the line where the state is investigating, taking over the permitting within the river corridors, and what that's going to look like, I'm not clear. Uh, yet.
More.
As in permitting, as in zoning permitting?
I am not, I don't have much more information than that, that the state is looking into river corridors and getting more involved with those.
So you don't have.
That's not till twenty twenty-eight.
Right, so you don't have additional information about what they would require. For example, do they want us to create swells? Are you talking about erosion issues like?
No, zoning, zoning. So it would be within your zoning bylaws. So like. You know, you don't allow new building within the S F H A.
Okay.
That type of stuff. Yeah, yeah, sorry. I didn't.
Hmm.
Understand what you were asking. My apologies.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, so, um, making it happen, right? So right now, we all know that the state is just, is the, excuse me, the government's coming out of its shutdown. Um, FEMA canceled, uh, the BRIC program, which was previously used to fund, um, hazard mitigation plans, uh, in the past. So that's what the state would use, and then the municipalities would be sub-applicants in that case. So we lost that funding at the beginning of the year, and so Vermont Emergency Management V M has kind of been scrambling in the interim to find. Where can we find that money for municipalities in order to fund the creation of these plans? So right now, um, an email had gone out, Tara, I don't know if you saw it. Um, that specific towns have been entered into an application to FEMA for disaster relief funding. So. The D, I don't know, D R forty-seven twenty, are you guys familiar with? I'm gonna throw a lot of numbers at you. So the twenty twenty-three floods created this bucket of money for Vermont, and that's called D R forty-seven twenty. So it's related, that D R forty-seven twenty is the disaster declaration number for the twenty twenty-three floods. D R forty-eight ten are those, that bucket of funds that came to us because of the twenty twenty-four floods. And panel has been written into the application by the state for those forty-seven twenty funds. Um, so the state is working on getting that application to FEMA, and then hopefully they will approve the funding. Um, for us to use those funds for hazard mitigation plans. Panel is one of those towns that has been included there. Um, an email went out that was like, if you don't want it, let us know. If you do, don't do anything. Um. So I, I kind of like that they choose an opt-out version, and then of course, if you. Choose down the, the road, you're like, we don't want to do a hazard mitigation plan for whatever reason. No negative impacts, we just let the state know, and they can reallocate funding in that way. Um, so. What it looks like, um, it's been a long time since panel has done a hazard mitigation plan. Um. You know, and, and I'm assuming that's for multiple, multiple reasons. Um, but. You know, we would love to see all of our towns at least get that twelve point five percent in case something does happen. You know, bridges that wash out can cost a lot of money, um, you know, and get you guys the higher. Rate so that you're not left holding the bag for more money than you need to.
So, my, like, my question to you is. In writing these hazard mitigation plans.
Mm-hmm.
Where does that responsibility fall? Does it fall to the select board?
Yes, just you.
Just the.
No, no, I'm totally.
Who am I?
No, so that is, that's something that the town can contract out for. Um, you would just write an R F P and B C R C would most likely respond. And then, you know, you might get other respondents from around the area, and you guys would go through your process with that to choose a contractor who would walk. Um, a group of usually, it's like a member of the select board and, um, a planning committee member, and then. You know, we would ask Craig to be involved as the E M D, and, you know, we would have a group from the community that could join and offer input, and then you have to do. Um, you know, you have to get information from the public, so be that in a survey or public meetings, you know, you have people come in and talk. Um, about, you know, what they see in the community, and then, you know, the plan is drafted usually by the contractor with the assistance of the, of the group.
Okay, because we have the Uzic River.
The tactical basin, yeah.
Right, so I, I just, I guess where I was going with that is there's a bunch of people that. Spend a lot of time there, so I, I didn't know if they wanted at least a member from their group.
Yes.
Be excluded.
No, they would not be. They would absolutely be a very important stakeholder in this process, um, because they would be very knowledgeable about.
Right.
Basin.
At least if they wanted to be.
Oh, yeah.
Question, um.
Don't force people.
When you, do you go, do you? Can you go? One step, then the next step or the next step, or do you have to do the? Um, all, uh, whatever you decide to do all at once?
Are you talking about the actions?
The three actions you have to do. Just asking on that. The one for the river corridor.
Oh, no, you can do those.
Those, those can be, you can.
Yeah, yeah.
One, and then get to the next one.
Yeah.
That's all I wanted.
No, you've got it. So if we go back, I'll even hand this out to you guys.
Take one, round and short on two. No, I understand that. I just was asking now. Mitigation plan in the river corridor. River corridor. Actually, I thought you did a river corridor. Looks like the mitigation plan, correct me if I'm wrong, is, is the one that's going to get us. Whether.
To the twelve point five.
Five.
Yeah, so when you look at this, here's the interesting thing that the state did, is that those first four steps. Even if you have river corridors, if you're missing one of those first four steps, you don't get an increased rate. You have to have all four of those steps. Which includes that hazard.
We could have a river corridor, but we don't get it because.
Because.
Don't have the other one.
Yeah, you might not have adopted road standards, or you might not have adopted your land.
Have a river corridor. Well, I don't, but that's.
We can review that. So sometimes there are errors in this report from the state. Or if you think that you have that, I can pull the bylaws and we can take a look.
Sure, I used to be, I was, but I don't know, I remember, uh. I think. I'm assuming, and I know what happens when you assume stuff, so. But.
And we can double-check that. We have found issues previously that were not updated here.
Okay.
I'm more than happy to take a look at that if you think that that might not be correct.
Doesn't hurt to look.
Does not hurt to look.
River corridor.
Does not hurt to look. Um, so yeah, I can go and pull the bylaws and we can, we can take a look at them. Um, but that, that hazard mitigation plan is what's really holding you back in this case. Um, and so, you know, um, you know, we want to get that process moving. So what that means is that we have to wait. For the state to say, yes, we have funds. Um, there's always the possibility of the town, a group taking it on themselves. Um, FEMA has very strict standards. Um, so you would just have to make sure that you're checking all of the boxes within that plan. Um. If, if you wanted to attempt it, if you want to do it yourselves, if you feel you have really knowledgeable people here in town that could undertake that, totally acceptable. Um, and V E M does the review of it, and they communicate, ooh, we lost everybody.
Get them back.
Okay. Um, and so, and, and they communicate with whoever submitted the plan to say, hey, this section has been missed. And they do like a temporary approval on behalf of FEMA, and then FEMA comes through and says, yes, you guys nailed it. So.
Do you have, um, an estimated cost over the plans usually?
So B C R C is usually around twelve to fifteen thousand to do the, to do the plan. The town can pay that out of. Town funds if, you know, that's what you choose to do. You don't want to wait to find out what's happening with the FEMA funding coming down. That's an option as well. Um, you know, just because we're in the holding pattern, waiting for that, you know, response from FEMA. For those funds.
We recently had a request denied, not emergency funds. Um, the governor made a request, oh, right, it was just denied, so.
Yeah, the emergency fund. So, but these funds are associated with that bucket of money that's attached to the previous disasters. So it's a, it's a little bit different of a ballgame with those funds. Um, not to say that there's a hundred percent chance. This will be approved and we'll get the funding, but. V E M is actively working to get these. So, um, so I just wanted to present it to you. So should V E M say, hey, yay, these ones are available if panel would like to move forward? We've talked about it already. You guys can just say, yes, we want to move forward. Um, I can help, uh, supply you with an R F P. Template, uh, to draft up, um, if you want to move forward that way. Um, so you can get, get that moving right away, and then we're not wasting any time, because the process does take. You know, if we're really cruising along, we've got a really good group that's super focused and driven, it can take a year. You know, at a more leisurely play pace, it's like eighteen months to work through the process. With the public outreach and the development of the plan itself. Any other questions? Okay.
Did you send that template to like?
Yeah.
Like, just so that we have it on, so we can go ahead and start taking a look at that?
Absolutely.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I, I think doing this hazard mitigation plan is nothing but beneficial. If we're dealing with a disaster.
Yeah. Yeah, so definitely is.
Strongly agree.
Um. Seven point five to twelve point five, you know, five percent could be potentially be a lot of money, especially when you're talking to bridges.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, or so, right? So, you know, I know that we can't, so you don't need to make a decision tonight, and that we can't, shouldn't. I'd never have to make a decision tonight, but I think, I think it's a great idea to spend that.
Okay.
Down. We can have something ready to go if we have. A go-ahead from B C R C.
Yep, once we hear from the state, we can say, you know, release the R F P. And then, you know, that plan is going to create a list of mitigation actions item in there to help the town kind of stay focused on. The mitigation projects, and then when grants come up, you guys can say, oh, look.
Right.
We have community support for this. Let's try to get funding, and it's backed by that plan too. So it also helps in that way. As well. So if you do have any projects related to mitigation that need to be done, it kind of gives that. A little bit of backbone when you go through the grant process for those. Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, Tara, I have notes to send you, and I'll review those bylaws, and we'll, we'll take a look. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, updates from town officials.
Okay. I do kind of have a couple. So from Joel, I think he sent this all to you as well, but I believe it was an update from him. Uh, just a quick note, as you all know, no one applied for the per diem plowing position. So I got a person who's willing to do it this year. His name is Kenny George. He is reliable, holds a C D L, and will be a good fit. If you all agree, we'll move forward with it. He recommends paying in twenty because he can utilize the bigger trucks also. Um, I don't know if the board wants to.
Great, we need someone.
I know, I'll just.
You want to vote on those aboard?
Does that require, I mean, I, I, I'm just, my, my question is, does it require? Board, but we did discuss it, and we did tell Joel to move ahead, to find some, to hire someone to do this. Um, we need to vote on if that's fine, but.
Let's just dot our i's across our t's.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approved to hire.
I'll second that motion.
Any more discussion? All of the fair?
Aye.
Um, he goes on to say, our new truck is ready, and we will probably pick it up sometime next week. At that time, I would like to put the truck, we are replacing up for sale. Um, either, either privately or at auction, um, probably the latter if it's okay with you. We'll keep the two thousand twelve. Off.
Yeah.
Or we'll drive first there. I ended up going with Morton Salt for eight. Or we'll drive first there. I ended up going with more than salt for eighty two seventy per ton, about ten dollar. Per ton cheaper than my last lot's bid. Last year's price was seventy seven sixty five. Any questions, feel free to ask. It's Joel.
Is that what we down in the past, if we would be to auction off, for example, like the truck that we're getting rid of, is that normal?
Usually we have to auction that. Well, it's a style of auctions, like put it out to bid or advertise that it's for sale.
I think Joel usually uses auctions in the national.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, no, that sounds great. I was just curious.
Yeah, it's like a legal requirement.
Just for FYI, I'm salt. We, we Joel was figuring out about eight hundred ton. Um, he has about a hundred ton over there still from last year. So, which obviously means we need to purchase about seven hundred at five dollars. A ton difference versus last year. Um, so the numbers that we were, we thought we were going to have to deal with it ninety something to a hundred. Dollars a ton versus last year, we're we're way underneath that, so, which is good news.
Yes.
It's not, it's not a significant amount of money versus what we thought we were going to have to pay for salt, so. Good job Joel finding the best price for us with the town. Just wanted to bring that up in our conversation we had yesterday.
Um, next announcement is from Jen Boucher. She asked that I share the sixth annual panel holiday tree lighting will be Saturday, December sixth. And it starts at four with the panel mention of school chorus. Um, I believe this building will be open, will have hot cocoa and smores. There's usually like face painting and sing along and other activities happening. Um, lastly, just an update from Priscilla, our E nine one one coordinator. She's just sort of updating the board, more emails, phone calls happening um, at different addresses. The hearing that was held on October twenty third was successful. You renamed it or named a new road, private road harvest trail. Off of South Stream. Um, she's had discussions with the road foreman on correcting road signs and that was completed. And then the ongoing project that she mentioned before, working with the Lister's office on identifying homes that have lead or asbestos. And that is it for.
Uh, old town hall continuing destruction impossible action.
So, it's. Let's go check in. Um, so I do want to thank Tara who helped. Um, who sent us basically a timeline, the board of timelines to help remind us of where we've been with this. It's incredibly helpful and to seek further direction from the board. And I, and I don't know about the other fellow board members here. Um, but I know that I have certainly received a number of calls and texts and requests like. When are you guys going to put together this committee that you talked about? So you've talked about it in probably three select board meetings at this point. Um, having a committee that is open to anyone who lives in panel. Um, we don't really need to know. Um, and to set times and days for this committee to meet. And a specific charge for it, like just like we did, um, I mean, this would be a temporary committee, but I'm thinking about like the conservation commission. Right, the select board was really good with coming up a very specific charge. This is what you are to do. Like, do the research, investigate, come back to the select board with your proposals to the old town hall that we can consider. And I know that we also have litigation going right now, talking about the, you know, the ownership of that is even in question. Um, and so I think that we cannot move forward on things like feasibility studies. Things that we're going to spend money on potentially until we're we've worked with this litigation. Um, so we may have an opinion about how that's going to go or may have a hope about how that litigation works out. But until we know, I think, I personally think I'd like to be prudent financially. But it costs us nothing to move ahead with what we've told people we would do and that is a committee to come together. So I would propose that we open it up for two weeks. For anyone who wants to be on this committee to email town office. Um, let Tara know, like, name, address, where you live, that sort of thing. So we know that you're in panel and just say that you'd like to be on the committee. Like, I also like to avoid any sort of. Concerns or accusations that, oh, you're only letting people on the committee who want to do X, Y, or Z for the old town hall. So I personally don't think we need to know what anyone's position is prior to that committee meeting. Just that you live in panel and want to be on it. So if you could just keep it neat. Um, and direct that you want to be on it. And then I think after two weeks, we have the people who want to be on that committee that I think is a select board. We could set a number of days for them to meet, like if it was six meetings, like every other week or whatever, like a timeline. A day of the week that doesn't like conflict with other town meetings that are happening. And then set a charge for them. I I just feel like. A lot of work has been put into this, a lot of time has been spent on this. I don't think that Tara should be charged with like organizing this. Things happen forever. I think we have a committee that takes care of that. That's my proposal.
I have an issue. We still have pending litigation. And I said before that I don't think we should wait for the pending litigation to be done. Before we decide to do anything, but that's just, that's just me.
Well, I don't think we can decide, right, to your point. I don't think we can decide what to do, but I think, do think it could be helpful. If there are people who are interested, who want to meet to discuss it, who could have come back to the select board with a proposal, not that we can't act on it. But so we have something ready at the end of that litigation if.
But I, yeah, just that's my opinion.
Okay.
So, and I know people, everybody else has other opinions.
Don't think it hurts to have a conversation.
No.
And having a committee to start a conversation is a good thing. And that way we can get ideas out there and. Maybe have a little teeth for when the litigation's over.
I thought there was litigation with the church. What's, there's.
It's the entire. The whole property, the whole property.
So, um. I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in, obviously. I think, I think we should move forward with the committee because we've said we're going to. And we've said it multiple times, right? And we put it off and put it off and put it off and it should have been done by now or whatever we. I do think we need to put the brakes on a little bit, as Carl said, because we don't really. Know, we've got opinions, but it's in a court's hands on who owns the property. Okay, all of them, basically. Um. So until a judge decides that. I think we need to put the brakes on a little bit for sure and not spend any more money. Um, on it because time is money and I know Tara's put an incredible amount of work in there and it's been great work and. It's stuff that really needs to be done anyway. So it's not wasted. It's one of the, it's it's time that needed to be spent, okay? So it's not like we wasted anymore, but let's let's back up a minute. Let's former committee, to to go back to your, to genie's suggestion here. I think residents. A very simple email. It should be name, where you live. Contact information. And it should go to, um, at least two people. It should go to the executive assistant. For one, and then I know we can pick somebody here, it can be any board member, it can be however we want to do it.
It's not necessary because I'm going to forward it to the board anyways. You could just pick a board member.
So it's not, it's not.
Not to give the appearance to the public that I am somehow doing something wrong.
I know that.
And that they can trust to send it to me. I'm not going to hide it or hide it or do anything. Making that statement makes it seem like I might.
That's not, that's not, that's not my intention. That is not at all, Tara. It's the exact opposite of that. My intention is a one hundred percent the other side of that. If we do it this way, then absolutely no one can accuse anybody of doing something wrong, right? He's exactly right. Nobody can say, I sent an email to Tara and she didn't forward it on to anybody. No, you sent an email to Tara and Jeannie and neither one of them got or or whoever, not just using. I, and I, I, you know, you can put me on, I don't care.
I think chairman should be on.
I'm fine. I'm fine with that.
I don't have a problem.
And and I just, I just, because I think there is the potential for that. Happen. And that's one reason that I think we will not accept it, my opinion, okay, this is, a board can do what you want, right, we're a board. We will not accept a paper application that gets dropped off here at the town office or mailed in. We just will not accept it. It's going to be an electronic application to be on that committee. So that full transparency, you want to be on it, here's the guidelines, this is how you do it. And and if you don't do it that way and you come in here on the day after the 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 thing closed and you want to be on it, too bad. You've had two weeks, this is how it is. Well, you know, I was, sorry, it's closed.
We'll post that and we'll make that very clear.
Hmm, those are just some thoughts that I wrote down when you were talking, for sure.
Advertised, um, can you set the charge now so that when it's advertised or is that something you want to discuss? Because when I advertise it, what do I say? Join the committee to do what?
Join the committee. I I think what we would say, um.
But if we're setting the committee, we'll have say on the charge.
Right, now that's what you're saying. I don't want a charge, right, I don't want to.
Correct, so I think.
Advertise in the wrong way.
We're advertising is that we are creating a committee to research and discuss. Um, desired options in the future for the old town hall and the feasibility. For any future action regarding that town hall. And if you're on this committee. You will be expected to meet. I'm, I'm just saying this, we can change it one, every other week, let's start with six meetings. Individuals on that committee will be expected to do some research. So if they have an option that they're interested in, that they want to present to the rest of the committee and discuss. I would suggest you present some facts with it, present some economic facts with it, just like whatever you want done. And after that, board researches and meets six times, then they should come back with select board with a proposal. Um, it would be ideal if they could reach an agreement, but if they have to come back with several proposals, that's fine. And I don't think the select board is bound by those proposals, but that way we have a committee of residents. Who have met, who've discussed, and then bring us something. That's my proposal.
Tara, I want to, I want to expand back up one second, but I, because I forgot this and I meant to say this. In the letter of application, I absolutely do not want anyone. To express their feelings one way or the other in that letter. Oh, I want to be on there because I want to sell it or or whatever. I want absolutely, I want very simple, name, address. Contact information and and go from there. It's it's a really simple thing.
I think that's a good one.
I'm interested.
Just important to note that because it's an appointed committee, they will be subject to the meeting law. So I will reach out to Kate to see what days she's available because she will need to run the meeting.
Yep.
So also, I just need to look into like, how is the meeting going to run? I think you were going to participate in the committee.
We were gonna select somebody from the select board to just sort of help chair that committee.
Yeah.
Organize it.
Yeah.
And there'll be, and that person be responsible for attending the meetings and making sure that they're meeting on time and. Making sure attendance is taken, so I know who does show up and who does, like, we'll need someone for notes.
Because there is that legal piece of it.
Exactly. Yeah, but we have to make sure we're compliant with the open meeting laws.
But, you know, I think keeping it simple, I think, I think we set a two week period. Um, and then, and then it's, it's not limited in any way, shape or form in numbers. It it can be five people, it can be fifty people or whatever. Um.
Well, notice go out to the nonprofits in town. What's that? Well, notice go out to the nonprofits in town.
It'll go out to everybody.
Okay, I'll just.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, I just said because that that doesn't get forgot.
Right.
Posted for you.
You don't say it, sometimes it gets forgot.
And I think that's.
May I, would it be a form on the website you fill in or the invitation web you just sent to me?
I think, I think what we can, when we post, will be very specific about what we require in the email. And then I think it's on the resident to send the email and please meet the requirements. I think really simple.
I can do either or though. We can do a form that goes to email or we can.
Whatever it is here for you, quite frankly.
I'm gonna get easy for you. I would think, I would think at this point, just looking at the calendar. Um. Two weeks is obviously the twenty seventh is Thanksgiving. The next meeting after that would be the eleventh. Would that be, would that be in time? Because we got to figure out how to post it, right?
Yeah, I think if we open up, let's just say, post it starting on Monday, have it open for two weeks. With an anticipation, because we're just gonna, we're running right into the holidays.
Right.
Anticipation that the board doesn't start meeting until January.
I, I'm fine, I'm, I, I, yeah, well, I don't forget, we're, we're. I'm trying to push it. I I am very aware of the holidays, but I'm trying to, trying to make sure that we get this thing done. And not, not give the appearance that we're pushing it off again.
No.
Right, but I, and I'm, I understand where you're coming from for sure, right? So if we, if we came out on the eleventh, which is a regular meeting. And just brought up, okay, here's our committee and here's our members.
December the eleventh.
Yep, December the eleventh.
And then we can.
Is that enough time to, for you to get things set up and post to Tara to have a two week period? And I know, we're budget season two and I know that and I want to be.
Yeah, we can try to like, because are you going to want to meet each member? That's what I'm trying to figure out, like, okay, so you have the two weeks, get the emails, you don't want to meet them necessarily.
I don't, I don't.
Just to meet them in the meeting.
I think we just look at their application and go from there.
As long as. I think, I think we close applications on.
December first.
Um.
December first.
How about, how about we close December fourth?
Yeah, get on.
That's right.
All right, that, because it will stay consistent with a Thursday.
Okay.
And you know, and and then it gives us at least three days to verify that they're residents.
Yep.
I think that's an important piece here.
Yep.
Um. Not that I'm saying that somebody's going to, but it gives us three days to verify that, yes, they are a resident of the town of panel. Yes, they can be on this committee, yeah.
And so my email and Jeannie's because she's going to be on the committee, does that sound reasonable?
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
Name, their address.
It'll be posted, Jamie, but I think just the name, address, contract, contact information, you you know, obviously we're gonna have your, should have your email address. Being sent back, but just just contact information.
And just as, just so once in its statement that she want to be on the committee.
Hmm. You know, I mean, I I I would like to participate in the, um, old town hall discussion committee or whatever. Fairly simple. But, um, you know, like I said, I I absolutely don't want any. Feeling or thoughts or whatever in that email. I mean, that's just not, because, oh, we didn't put them on because, but you know, that's. And I, you know, we're not going to exclude anybody any. It'd be kind of crazy. Right, that.
Say with the charge, you can even say, I mean, since you're litigation, this is, should litigation go the way of the town? And, I mean, if litigation goes the way towards, we don't even, the town doesn't even own it, then it just.
The total point.
It's a free point. But then they're not starting at the end of this litigation.
Right.
We have some ideas and plans, like, should the litigation, you know, so speaking to Carl's concerns.
Yeah.
That should that litigation go away with the town, then there's some potential plans in place.
We've all been through this once, that's my sphere. That's my fear. We've already been through this once, well, with the litigation, Bob.
Do we have any more discussion? I don't think we need to vote on this. I think we're fine.
Okay.
Um.
Great, so then we'll post this on the seventeenth on Monday?
Hmm.
Okay, great.
Maybe tomorrow.
Okay.
Is there, do we need any more discussion on that? I'm good. Okay. Thank you. Uh, toward the panel event discussion impossible action. Uh, toward the panel event discussion impossible action.
Okay, so Emily sent a short write-up about this, but, um, this sort of stemmed from quarterly meetings that I've been having with Emily at the Solomon Wright Public Library. Um, in an effort to sort of not, in an effort to collaborate more often and on more things and. Um, just kind of keep each other informed, and she's been helping us with the sign that's by the fire department. Um, of her or her volunteers have been changing the lettering and stuff out for us, so that's really helpful. Um, but she had this wonderful idea, she said, local organizations, including Solomon Wright Public Library. Huzick River Watershed Association, the Bike Hub, Parks and Rec Committee, would like to revive the Tour de Pownell Bike Ride. Which last happened in twenty twenty-one, we see that the event would bring together the Pownell community as well as. Showcasing the town's natural beauty and resources to non-residents. Having the event situated at Center Street would bring attention to our beautiful town hall and new skate park. It also is a perfect spot for a walk to showcase the historical aspects of our town. We would like to ask permission to use the town hall parking lot, restrooms, and skate park for our event. Our tentative date is set for Saturday, October third, twenty twenty-six, currently, our point person is Emily Gold at the Solomon Wright Public Library. Um, and I would be collaborating with them and, um, and it's be a nice community event that the town could help with. If the board. Besides, we can use it at least.
Uh, sounds great, I'll make the motion that we accept it.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? I have, I only have a couple of quick. Questions, and they're not even really that big of a concern. Um, so I'm, I'm definitely not for this, but would we need? Sheriff's, um. To be present for any kind of traffic control, and I just, I I just would like to make sure that if we need them, that we speak.
Would that be on them or us?
I don't know.
Are you are for this or not?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I think that would be on them, wouldn't it?
I think it's, this is still an initial planning phase, so that, we're not really sure yet. But if we do, we'll. Um, mainly, right now, we just wanna make sure we can center it here, um, so that the younger children can use the bike. You know, the skate park for their.
But I to- I totally, I just wanna make sure that that's. Somebody thinks of that.
Yep.
You know, if if we need some kind of, you know, traffic patrol or whatever, but. I have a motion, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I think it's a great idea.
Sounds, yeah, fabulous.
Finisher Station Snowblower.
Quotes to you. Three of them that Tom had found, and he recommended the Husqvarna. Was twelve hundred dollars.
He has the money, he was putting the funds. What's your pleasure?
It's a motion. Let Tom purchase a. Snowblower, the Husqvarna for the twelve hundred dollars.
Second that motion.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We're a grant stormwater engineering permitting discussion.
So, um, as we're moving through the VORIT grant with the forest access, the Act two fifty permitting we thought would be. Pretty easy, it is not. We got flagged basically as possibly needing stormwater permitting. But in order to find out if we do, we had, we have to hire an engineer to evaluate. Do an analysis, analysis of the existing impervious surface. Of the gravel bed before the town purchased its parcel of land. From that time prior, all the way to the year, like, two thousand and four. Um, so we were given an estimate to do that an analysis of fifteen hundred. If that determines that we're beyond that impervious surface, this is way beyond my. Knowledge level, but if we're beyond that and we have to do the stormwater engineering, the permitting. Piece, that is gonna be an additional six to nine thousand. We do, thank goodness, have the money in the VORIT grant still to cover this, um, we were informed by our engineer that we. Wouldn't need it, and he was even just as surprised as us that now we're dealing with this, so.
And and that, I can speak a little bit on that through, through the zoning portion of it. Those are laws that have changed in the last couple of years. Um, through this thing, so it's, it's an incredibly difficult thing now to subdivide. Certain pieces of property because of the, the stormwater runoff and it's, it's just, it's kind of a nightmare. Some engineers won't even touch it. So it's kind of a, this isn't something that we didn't plan for, that we forgot, that we missed, or something that popped up. It's unfortunately, after the purchase, but now doing what you're doing. You have to, you have to do this, right?
We can't do the parking lot, more of the logging, or any of the work.
Right, so we, we have to do this. Um, we have to do this study. Have the engineer command, there's, like I said, some engineers won't touch it, I've, I've dealt with some people who are trying to subdivide property and engineers will not even. They don't want anything to do with it.
John Wright, Mance Engineer, is the one that we've been working with.
Which makes total sense, because he's the one that did the survey, they did all the work down there, they're very familiar, they don't have to re. They don't have to get acquainted with anything, like, just go in and do their work, so it's probably gonna save us twenty one.
I'm just glad that we have the budget board and the grant.
Do you need a motion?
Uh, yes, for the grant.
I'll make a motion that we have the work done.
I'll second that motion.
Then that's the stormwater engineering permitting, just, yeah, that's correct, yes, just wanna make sure.
That's fine.
I don't wanna say, I'd, I'd rather have it come from your, I'd rather have it come from your lips than mine, because I might say something wrong.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna, we're in the minutes, that's all.
I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, cool, drive.
Yes, so I decided to bring this to us, I don't even. Know that it needs a board vote, I think it probably should get one, but, I mean, the reality is that there are a lot of children. In our town. Um, as far as I'm concerned, one is one too many, but we have kids in the town, we have adults, we have people who. Are struggling to keep warm in a lot of different ways. Um, I know I personally probably have an extra coat or two that I don't need in my closet. And so I propose that we just run a coat and glove drive. Um, starting like. Whatever, Friday or Monday, like, through, like, mid-December, to come up with a date for that. And I know that the library already has, like, closed the library, there are free, there's free clothing there, if you need access, like, um. A clothing closet or something, that would be helpful. The library may make sense as a place for coats to land. Um, like, I am aware that there are different congregations and churches around who do something similar, but I think. One, not everyone wants to go into a church or something, some people just don't wanna go, and two, if we had it at a town spot. Everybody knows the library, like, everyone knows town hall. Um, so if we could get approval from the library, if they're all in, and I suspect they would be, I think they would be. Um, or in our back room. But if we could just encourage folks, um, who want to donate or who want to give, they could bring new ones, it could be. Used ones in good shape to drop off to share with their neighbors. And I think that folks should be able to access that without questions asked, if, for example, if it were here. Come in, say hi to Julie, I need a coat, I'm headed back to get a coat. Or drop them off, I don't wanna create work for staff here, so if we could find and designate a place, it would be great if it's just the library.
Great use for the old town hall, I know I probably shouldn't say that, but, I'm going to.
It's, it's.
But that is a great idea, I think it's very useful for our, for our town.
I think, I think asking the library is a great idea. Um, I think, I, you know, the library seems very cooperative, and, you know, we've been working well together for the last. Three or four years or whatever it's been. I think there's also an option, I'm sure we could find someplace here. That people could. Pop it, I I'm looking at this room, and I'm not so sure that. That back corner, Tom couldn't be used for some coats, right?
Yeah, I mean.
But, you know, there's, there's a corner back, I mean, I don't, I don't foresee a tractor trailer load of coats being delivered anywhere, right? You know, that'd be kinda nice, but.
It would be nice, but.
I I see, you know, um. S- s- some. And I would hope there would be a fairly significant number of coats to be, you know, I I know that I can go through my closet and I can grab ten coats and drop them off, okay? So, so I think having a couple of. Um, spots, if we could, if we could collaborate with the library, it would be awesome. I think we could find a spot here in this building where during business hours, exactly like you said, they're not gonna. It's not Tara's responsibility, it's not Hannah's responsibility, we could put up some cardboard signs. Or paper signs that were kinda cool and say, folks, this way, it's heated, they're inside, they can try them on, they can do without, okay? Will those be coats that will be accepted from individuals? Um, just thinking of logistics on that. I mean, it sounds great, only worry I would have would be, um. You need to make sure that the coats are cleaned, I don't know how the, I don't know how other. Um, um, oh, drives do it. I would have a concern with getting a coat that, well, had, um. Some guests on it.
I, I hear you saying we, we don't, but, in town hall or anything else like that, totally get you. I I will say, I've got, had some experience running. I, I, like, clothes closets before, and generally, if you ask people, please bring. Like, new or gently used, clean coats, that's what people are gonna bring, like, and if someone were to bring something for some reason, it's just like. Holy mackerel, what happened to this coat, then we could dispose of it, but like. Usually people, I think, are pretty good about.
As, as I say, I'm just saying the stuff that needs to be said sometimes.
I think it's a great idea, like, you know, I'm, I I guess the worst, worst-case scenario is, we're gonna have to bring a exterminator in. Well, we're gonna, you know. I guess that is the worst case, Carl, but.
You said the worst case, and that is the worst case.
So, for the worse than what I was thinking. What I was thinking is after you do a coat drive. Um. December thirty-first or whatever, you have to take, you know, the remaining coats that you have and bring them. Somewhere to. One of the worst things, right?
Well, that's not a problem, I mean, they're real, in reality, no.
Right.
Because eventually they will be used for somebody.
Right, right, you know, but I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, we don't wanna leave a pile of coats over there all winter long.
Well, that's why I think we have a cutoff date, right? Till the end of the year, you need a coat, come by, and if we have leftover. I would be more than happy to take responsibility for finding an appropriate place in Pownell or at least Bennington County to donate those.
I deal with a lot of.
Or the school even, maybe they would like some extra coats if we have any leftover.
Uh, yeah, I I deal with a lot of. I I know in my job, there's a lot of families that could use those, so it's, it's not just kids that could use coats, there's a lot of families. That I see on a daily basis that can use some coat. So I think it's a great idea. I think we just gotta do, and I think we have the logistics now, right, we could probably focus libraries, say, hey, Emily, this is what I'm doing. You know, there's, there's, um.
I'll clock in in the morning.
Significant population down there that, yeah, fairly close by, we also have a. You know, population here of of adults that may need some coats, that are, that don't live too far away as well, so. What's the board's flavor?
Guess we move forward, make it, make that a motion?
You have a motion and a second already on the table.
Well, then, I guess we vote. Although, well, that's Spike's job. That's what, that's what Brian said.
Our motion, Jeannie seconded.
Yep. I, I made it, I forgot, I, yeah, so.
I may not look like I'm listening, but I'm listening.
I am playing a promotion after second, so.
Sometimes I just zone off.
Carl motion, Jeannie seconded, you clarified.
All right.
Our discussion started.
Perfect, thank you. I have a motion and I have a second, we had plenty of discussion, all those in favor? You're in the board meeting schedule, thank you, Brian, for.
Freaking out this little helpful thing, so I had to try to keep track of the dates, there really aren't that many dates left. Next week, I don't feel like we're really ready to have any meeting next week or need to. Um, the following week is Thanksgiving.
Isn't, isn't that?
Yes, next, next week.
Next week is as regional.
I'm going to, um. I'm gonna attend that.
Okay. But then December fourth, I need to ask for a special because, um, the county forester, conservation commission, and Parks and Rec would all like to come. To discuss the integrated management plan and the forest management plan that, uh, the county forester has developed. Um, yes, so, that's like a presentation that they'll do.
Uh, will they be forwarding that before the meeting, so that?
I will request that they do, yes.
So we could just piggyback the special meeting and carry over our next meeting until the fourth?
Um, you could, or just say your second meeting of the month is canceled?
Oh.
It's.
I, I think we could go, I think, when I say Tara, um, I don't see a, unless something really pops up. They, I don't think we have a whole bunch of business that needs to be transacted between now and December eleventh.
The only thing we got on the eleventh is our candidates for the committee.
Right, but that's just to name them off, not even doing it.
Right, I understand, but that's the only thing.
Right, and, um. Right, but I, I, I don't see a need for, I really and truly don't, we never do anything around Thanksgiving except for push things.
Push things until December, so that we can work on all the semi.
That's right, so if we, if we just stay with our schedule, so to speak, we go, come here the fourth for that, which is a very important meeting.
What time, by the way, are you thinking for that?
That we can. Up to the board, two, five or six?
What time would be best optimal, so we could have the most full flavors, looking at work schedules, like, what works?
Six is good for me for showing up.
All right, then let's stay with six o'clock on December fourth, December eleventh will be a regularly scheduled meeting anyways.
And then the eighteenth, I'm hoping we could have a special budget meeting, cause then we'll have to really be cranking out budgets fast. And we wanna combine our regular twenty-fifth, December twenty-fifth meeting with that, if there's business that needs to be discussed.
That's fine, everybody good with that? If we have any, um. We have any pressing issues, if not, I'd like to just stay concentrated on budget and get.
That we gotta get that budget done.
Yep.
You know, if there's a pressing issue, then we can turn the ad, but other than that, I don't.
Yeah, and if there's anything, you know, that pops up, we can always pick a different day, but keep it Thursdays, so. Wonderful.
Can it be your schedule?
Uh, staff appreciation and incentive holiday gift discussion impossible action.
Um, so just the formality, you usually allow me to do this every year, it's fifty, fifty dollars for Thanksgiving, I take out of my expense line. As a gift for everyone, and then for the holiday luncheon, we usually give out another fifty from a different store.
Great.
But because the monetary value is over my purchasing price, I just, you know, I can get permission.
Board's players. I'll make a motion that we allow Tara to move forward with the, um, purchases.
I'll second that, sure.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I will say that, um, the two staff appreciation parties that we've had. The last two years have been well-received. Um, by everybody, it's, it's a great, it's a great thing.
You remind me the date for that again, now we.
Yeah, you said we were gonna be the. I, yes, I think it is the top.
December twelfth.
There's so many December dates in my head right now, I'm like.
I know.
I don't know.
No. Okay, overnight parking on town property, continue discussion.
So I put this as continued discussion because we discussed it before, and Joel had Chris put the signs up for us in different locations. Out here in this parking lot, and then a couple other town properties. Um, but since then, we've had, um, you know, some campers show up around town. And the concern is, is that we could end up with campers on town property, and then what would we do, I mean?
I think, I think it's a great, I think it's a great idea, we, we kinda just, that was kind of a. Last-minute kind of discussion for some situations that happen here at the town office.
Right, so now it's a little bit different, you know, are the overnight parking signs sufficient, could we have the sheriffs remove people, probably? But, do we need to make sure that it's like an ordinance to make sure we can? But do we need to make sure that it's like an ordinance to make sure we can remove people? I don't know what.
Do we, do we also just kind of want to maybe for just a bit watch it and see, like, instead of anticipating what's gonna be? I mean, I know that we had that issue, but I'm just wondering, we need to pass ordinances until we know that we need to pass them.
We could just stick with the signs.
I think the signs, people are.
Signs that make sure to better, I shouldn't say better, do do enforcement and then go from there. If it becomes a problem, then we go with the ordinance.
Right, and I think, I think we need to expand a little bit. Possibly a little bit on our, on the signage, right? I know we put one here, I, I believe there's one down at the, um, warehouse. Yeah, but if there isn't one down at the warehouse, there should be, I believe.
Not a, yeah. Yeah, there's almost always cars parked overnight down there now.
And I think we should, I think we should have one at the Little League Field.
All town properties.
All, all the treatment facility.
Yeah, in the road.
No, but they can park out front of the gates.
Yeah, if we put some down around the warehouse.
That is still town property.
Yeah, I just think we expand to the town properties, easily accessible town.
Because I used to see, when I would drive around, oh, my father, I would always see people parking down back on that trail.
I mean, eventually we're gonna have to figure out, we're gonna have to do the same thing. Which is gonna be a little tricky now that I think about it, on, on.
If you're gonna allow camping on the trail properties, people are gonna have to go tonight.
Right, right, on the road, if we're gonna allow camping up on the mountain, it's gonna be a little touch and go there.
Well, we were talking about doing like a.
I've got some ideas.
That's, let's not make more problems.
Right, but you don't, but you gotta start, you gotta think about it.
Right.
But we, but have we done the cemeteries?
Yes.
Yeah.
That was, that was.
I was just asking.
Yeah.
I, and I think, I do think like places where we're allowing camping, I think it is a little hard to distinguish and discriminate between people who are parking there to go up and camp in their tents and people who don't have necessarily their place to sleep. I mean, the reality is, Binnington, for example, will have an overnight emergency shelter this year. But the trigger for opening that is negative ten degrees.
The cold blue.
It's like, uh, and it's, you know, I don't know that everyone knows that they, example, if they have nowhere else to be but their car, they can park at Walmart overnight and what we chase off.
Like, but that's, right, right.
Right, so it's something, and everybody knows that that's something that Walmart allows. It just is. Um, yeah, so I guess I'm just thinking about places like if we do allow camping.
We don't, we don't think, we don't.
Right, with the town forests eventually, or.
That's what I'm just thinking. I'm just, yeah, we're thinking if we do have places where we allow it for some things and not others, at that point, I think that's a problem.
Well, I guess, but that's gonna be a whole discussion about the uses for that up there. And we haven't, I don't think we've gone that far yet, have we?
Yeah.
Once we get a parking lot, I agree, well, that's what our next step will be.
I just, I just think we need to make sure we have them in places that are easily accessible for people who aren't. And have them, our cemeteries for here, the Little League Field, I'm a little concerned, you know, you got kids running around.
I'm surprised that hasn't happened yet.
So, and Strobridge, yeah, Strobridge, definitely.
Strobridge Park, that's right down around the warehouse.
Yeah.
Those type of places. As long as we're signed there, I think we're okay.
Okay.
If we do find the problem, well, then we create an ordinance and.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. How about a public camera, Hannah?
Yes, do you want to stand up?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Excuse me.
You told them you can go, my cursor is pointing.
I can see your cursor moving.
Yeah, we can't see us. It's not the usual view.
The, the participants can see you, but it's not what gets.
We can't see you. We can't see them.
Jim, do you want to talk?
Can you unmute them?
That's why she was.
Hannah's screen is frozen.
He can even hear us.
Can he send something in the chat that you can read? That's something we have him to communicate?
Oh, I see what you're doing. You're taking some of the pressure off the system.
Did you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you, Jim.
Okay, no problem. I mean, it's a, it's a whole new thing and I think it's great that I just see you guys and nothing else can pop up illegally. Um, first of all, I just, I hate to do this and bring back the Old Town Office, but this, tonight was maybe the first night that I've heard the word litigation regarding the Old Town Office. I thought it was just litigation that was happening between the church property, the carriage house and the town. Um, so my opinion, um, not to quote anyone else, is that, um, if we don't know who owns a property, there is no use in having a committee come in and make suggestions if their town may not own it. So I, I, I think knowing that there is a litigation in question and something is moving forward as to finding the whole property configuration of that whole area up there that may have moved too fastly before, but now we're on a, a, a good track of saying, let's just figure out what is happening up there, who owns what? And everything that I, I personally, and since you didn't take a motion, I don't think the committee should continue until we know exactly who owns what property and where the boundary lines are and all of that. I, I hate to waste anyone's time sitting in a meeting to come up with suggestions and then come find out, well, the town doesn't own the property. So, um, that's only my opinion. Um, and I'm not gonna go on further because we've discussed this way too long. Um, personally, I think, um, the one remark about the exterminator was not very good. And I, um, want to just say, happy holidays, guys. Thanks.
Happy holidays.
Any other public comment here? Well, entertain the most no adjourned. Tom, hold on, Tom, did you, okay, sorry, I know you're sitting here. Thank you.
I'll move that we adjourn the meeting, leaving.
All those in favor?
Hi. Thank you.